Hello, everyone. Okay, I see somebody's driving. Hi, Madam President. Be very careful. All right, my name is Marcia Ellison. I see some new faces here. I am Civic Engagement Chair for the NAACP Florida State Conference. I also serve as President of the NAACP Fort Lauderdale Broward Branch. We wanted to make sure that we continue the conversation of mandatory masking in Florida schools. Practically everybody on here is in the pathway of DeSantis, Governor DeSantis. And so we wanted to have a conversation to understand from a school board perspective, what you all have been experiencing. Dr., our Chair, Dr. Osgood, will be joining us shortly. What we're going to do now is just remind you that it is being recorded and is also being broadcast on our NAACP FTO Broward Facebook page. We will begin, as we always do. Minister Bridget Edwards, will you begin? Open us up with prayer, please. Unmute Bridget.
Let us go to the Lord in prayer. Eternal God and Father, we come in this hour to first say thank you. God, we beseech you now in the precious name of Jesus, asking that you would allow your Spirit to abide with us throughout this evening's proceedings. God, we ask for your favor. We pray for guidance in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Amen. Let me begin by first introducing to you all and presenting to others our leader, our National Board of Directors member, our President of the Florida State Conference NAACP, and this is her 21st year, her 41st year in the NAACP. She spent 41-plus years as an educator in the state of Florida or in Miami-Dade's public school system, where she started as a teacher and then certainly rose to an administrator, working with children. But she acts as though she never left the classroom because she's always thinking about children and how we can help them and certainly save them, and this is no exception. And she has had very little sleep since all this stuff started to unfold and worries about the children constantly. We talk constantly and it's always, what can we do better? What can we be, should we be doing more? Let's call the attorneys. Let's get busy. So we want to begin with our President, Ms. Dr. Adora Obianueze. Madam President.
Good evening, Madam President, and thank you so much for those generous words, much more generous than I certainly would have ever thought of with all we're doing. We just don't have time to think much anymore, so I appreciate that. And I really want to let you know that I am very proud of your leadership in terms of bringing to the forefront the issues that we definitely have to put on the front burner. You know, I'm so tired of other things not being on the front burner. But here I can depend on you and those of us and Broward to keep the first thing coming, which is our children. So I'm delighted to be here. I want to welcome each one of the other panelists and guests, and of course, my Sora, who will be here shortly. I am certainly waiting for her and all of the others that will join us. Thank you so much for the invitation.
Thank you, Madam President, for always indulging as we do this work of the NAACP. Let's hear from our school leaders. And this is, I was watching the news today, and there are school board members who are resigning all over the country. There are folk who are being threatened, who, you know, I heard something, and I'll ask Dr. Osgood to share the issue with, something with the Proud Boys from this past weekend. So this is getting elected, apparently was the easy part. Being able to do the work and being able to do it effectively without having threats on one's life is the difficult part. We want to make sure that you know that the NAACP stands with you. I have asked the Presidents of the branches in which the school board members are coming from to come on and also to share the work that they have been doing and how we're going to look to intensify the work and the partnership of the NAACP along with this issue. Many of you, hopefully everyone, has seen our press reliefs regarding our litigation, and I will, at the appropriate time, ask our branch General Counsel, Judge Alona Holmes, to explain where we are headed with that as well. But let's start with Dr. McNeely. Share with us, if you will take your time, introduce yourself and tell us what you are experiencing in your county as your school board chair. And I know the numbers are up across the board, but let's deal with the districts that are here and tell us about what's really going on within your district. Dr. McNeely. You are muted, ma'am. We need you to unmute. Okay.
Thank you very much for having me. I'm excited to be here with all of you this afternoon, tonight, rather. I'm from Alachua County and chairing right now of the Alachua County School Board. And I am ready to talk about what's been going on in our district. On August the 3rd, we made a decision at that board meeting to have masking for two weeks. We had not even started school at that time. We started school on the 10th of August. And so we listened to all of our medical professionals from North Florida Regional Hospital as well as the University of Florida UF Health chains. And from those, from that particular meeting, we learned so much about the positivity rate, about the quarantining, the masking, why we should be doing masking, to help mitigate everything that could possibly happen. Certainly, we were going to continue with the washing of hands, social distancing as well, and encouraging everyone 12 and above to get vaccinated. Well, we started that and said in two weeks, the 17th of August, we would reevaluate what we were doing, where was the surge, if anything, or the spike. And so on the 17th of August, we reevaluated and had many more professionals to come in and speak with the board. At that point, it was a unanimous vote, just as it was August the 3rd. August the 17th, I'm so proud to say that it was another unanimous vote to continue with the masking. We decided at that time that within eight weeks, we would have another reevaluation. Right now, we have a lot of students who are being quarantined. We have 400 students recently, in the last two weeks, testing. 700, meaning that they were tested and needed to go home. The last couple of weeks, we've had 700 more students in front. But the hardest thing for me, ladies, is that the students are showing up more spikes, more surges. And at one time, the non-masters were saying, oh, that's not going to happen. We are not, you know, you're not going to see this with your students. But we are. The 16 students on last week that were hospitalized, four of those 16 are now in ICU. This is awful. It is awful for the families. It's awful for the community, and it's awful for our staff. I want you all to know that not only were the students required to have masking, but also all of our employees. And so we are hoping that in the next eight weeks, things will decrease. That's a hope. But now with both universities, Santa Fe College as well as the University of Florida, I don't really see that happening at this point. I see so many students on University Avenue with no masks. So you know what that means and what will possibly happen in our community. We started getting major threats after the Commissioner of Education, Richard Cochrane, spoke with the Superintendent of Schools. Right after that day, and after she stood fast and said we were not backing down, the next day, we received a letter stating in 48 hours, we had to answer all of the recommendations or otherwise they were going to withhold compensation from the board members. In addition to withholding compensation, they're even threatening now to move us out of our seats. So I'm for one, as Chair, I'm not backing down. And I can tell you, the community is behind us. The non-masters have done all kind of threats, you know, via email, via phone calls, but we are not stepping back. I am so glad. Since last week, we had eight other districts to join Broward and Alachua. I'm not sure as to today, how many more have joined us, but we are definitely going to move into litigation with Broward and other districts. I know I said a lot.
That's what we want to hear. We want to hear the truth. Now, have they, I think I read somewhere that they have moved to withhold your pay?
Yes, that was the latest threat. And you know what, President Ellison? It's okay. It really is okay. However, the National Secretary of Education in Washington DC, Dr. Miguel Cardona, he has said that this will not happen. They can hold the 13% back, but they have our backs. Not only did the Secretary of State say that in Washington, but our local agencies have stated that as well, such as the Board of County Commissioners have joined to say whatever our needs are, they will certainly do that. As far as removing us, threatening to remove us from our seats, the Governor has already overreached so much politically, but I would not be surprised if he doesn't try that as well. We're just waiting to see what are his next steps. However, we, as I stated, we are going into litigation to fight this wholeheartedly.
And one more thing, Dr. Neely. I saw, had an opportunity to see the response because they wanted to, I believe, wanted Alachua to report on a daily basis the number of issues with non-masking individuals. And I think in our legal department was quite impressed with your GC's response to that. So tell us what your response was when they asked that you report on this, your non-compliance with this law.
Well, one of the things that had been stated is that given the school board of Alachua County does not have an unlawful covering of mandate policy. We don't have an unlawful, so we do not have anything to report. I think that angered them even more so with that quick, short comment, and we stood where we needed to stand. So that's why now I think they are pushing very hard in order to not compensate the local board members. And I want you to know that the member that the Governor just appointed to the vacated seat that we had, she was the one who voted against what we decided on as far as litigation. So it was a 4-1 vote at that time.
Thank you, Doc. Let's go over to Ms. Caprice Edman. You are from Pinellas County. And share with us, Madam School Board Member, what are your experiences there? Because you all are in the news, just like the rest of us, with all of your issues.
Yes, thank you for inviting me. I am attending as an individual, a school board member. The opinions and comments are my own. And Pinellas County Schools does not have a mask mandate or a parent opt-out. It's simply strongly encouraging mask wearing. If you want to wear a mask, wear it. If you don't, don't. And I've been asking for a special meeting so that we can implement a mask mandate since late July. And I did not have the majority of board members willing to participate, which ended up leading to August 9th, when there was a special called workshop by our Superintendent, Dr. Grego. And at that workshop, I made it a point to mention that due to the increase in COVID cases, the lack of plans moving forward, that I think we needed to implement a mask mandate. However, again, my colleagues did not agree. So fast-forwarding, school began. The cases continued to increase. We started receiving complaints and concerns from both parents, teachers, and other stakeholders regarding quarantining, the lack of contact tracing, the lag time that it took for people to be notified, the lack of social distancing, overcrowded cafeterias, and different things of that nature that were concerning to everyone, including myself, as I visited schools. So at our most recent school board meeting, which was held on the 24th, I made a motion to call a special meeting and implement a 90-day mask mandate, reassessing every 30 days with a medical opt-out only. However, I had three board members that agreed, but the majority did not. So that was voted down. And then I made another motion to have a special call meeting so that we could discuss additional mitigation efforts. And again, that was voted down, three to four. As recently as yesterday, I sent out another email to my colleagues requesting a special meeting so that we can implement a mandate. And by now, everyone knows that we received Judge Cooper's ruling. But prior to that, we had received notice last Friday of the ruling being in favor of the parents. So again, with the bombardment of emails, hearing from medical professionals, knowing our positivity rates have increased, I went ahead and sent out that email. As of today, 12:30 PM, there are 2,763 positive cases confirmed and 6,698 impacted individuals. That means that 2,223 positive students and 540 positive employees. And this has had an impact on the district operations as a whole. Just yesterday, an article was published regarding district staff who have a teaching certificate, being asked to volunteer to substitute to help support our schools. And then I think about students with disabilities. We have approximately 14,000 or 14% of our students with disabilities identified as needing services. And 75% of them receive their services in a general education setting. So if our teachers are being quarantined, students are being quarantined, and this goes or relates to all of our students. If people are quarantined, how are they learning? If their teachers or support staff are quarantined, if we're missing bus drivers due to quarantine, and our substitutes are not willing to take that risk because we don't have the mitigation effort of having a mask, it's setting ourselves up and doing a disservice to kids. And I think that we really do need to go back to our goal of ensuring that we're prioritizing safety and our schools are safe. And we know from the medical experts, the CDC, the AAP, and local doctors that masking works. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but certainly not least, our own Broward's own School Board Chair, Dr. Rosalyn Osgood. Doc, would you just tell us some of the experiences you've had? We have some new folk on here who were getting the perspective from, as a school board member. We know that, you know, school board members are being threatened all over the country. They are resigning. They're just, you know, can't do the real work because they're, you know, getting caught up in this other, these anti-maskers. So if you would share with us your story, Doc.
Thank you, Madam President. My President of the Fort Lauderdale Broward Branch of the NAACP. It's also good to see my Sora, Sora Adora, who is our State President. I certainly want to say good evening to the Honorable Judge Alona Holmes. First, I'll start off by thanking the NAACP. I immediately contacted the NAACP. Marcia and I are known for getting into some good trouble. God bless Judge Alona Holmes to retire recently. And so we have strengthened our bench. It's me, Marcia, Adora, and Alona now, and we continue to make that bit stronger. I just appreciate the support of the local NAACP, the National NAACP, and the Southern Poverty Law School. It is an interesting time for school board members. To all of my colleagues, it's good to see you. I am praying for us every day. Last week, I had the honor of being in Gainesville with Dr. McNeely and other school board members there. Returned home to get a call to tell me that the Proud Boys are kind of just going off the chain, the anti-maskers, that anytime now I'm in a public gathering, I have to have a detail officer with me for security because of the threats and the things that they're making. One of the Tuesdays, we were meeting. I had to suspend our school board meeting because they came in, took their mask off, and they started getting so aggressive. And with the board there, staff in the lobby, 14 floors of staff, I just, you know, all I could see in my mind was what happened on January 6th. And we certainly don't want to have an insurrection and have people's lives lost, you know, because of this mask issue. So I suspended the meeting. And immediately, they started yelling, you know, we'll follow y'all home. I feel very safe in my neighborhood. I love the neighborhood I live in. The people over here love me too. They'll take care of some people if they come over here and cause any problems. But it is a serious and a critical moment because the pandemic is real. As school board members, we're living our own live reality shows. We're all throughout the day, we get notifications of staff and students that have tested positive for COVID-19. We see the news headlines where it's three teachers here dying, three teachers there dying, people are dying. Many of us are dealing with personal situations, whether it's congregants in our church, people in our family that are dying or that are in the hospital on ventilators or went to the hospital and got diagnosed with COVID and sent back home because there are no beds to keep them there. So we are in an emergency health crisis right now with the Governor who has not called a state of emergency. The judge ruling came out today, and that was one of the things that was in the judge's ruling is that we are not in a state of emergency. A state of emergency allows us to have access to different funds. It changes OSHA requirements and many things that would help us be in a better position during this pandemic. The Governor has started withholding funds from, you know, our monies already. Our school board has requested those funds to be taken from our ESAR part of money, our early education, our early childhood and secondary education funds. But that request has to be approved by the Governor. We're expecting the Governor not to approve the request. So we simultaneously sent the letter to the Department of Education, to Mr. Miguel Cardono, you know, asking if they could just give us those funds directly and not give them to the Governor. So he is following through on his threats. We do expect him to try to ultimately remove school board members. It's interesting that he keeps saying that we're not following the Parents' Bill of Rights, and Judge Cooper is saying that he's not following the Parents' Bill of Rights, that you have to implement the law in its totality. You don't have the privilege, even if you're in a privileged class, you don't have the privilege of picking parts of the law and following that part and not following other parts of the law. And when you think about those of us that are setting policy in school districts, right now, we have critical situations. We have a pandemic that's causing. I'm in Broward County with 30,000 employees and 260,000 students. So we have about around 5,000 students and staff on quarantine right now. It impacts instruction daily. It disrupts the learning for the students. It is a nightmare of what we're dealing with in an environment where nationally, for the last eight or nine years, there's been a teacher shortage, and we have to rely a lot on substitutes. So we're already in a deficit. It also puts us in a situation where we see the mental health needs of student and staff now greater than it's ever been before, as well as support services. In our district, 60%, over 60% of our children are free and reduced, qualified for free and reduced lunch. So a lot of their parents don't have their second and third job now because of the pandemic. So schools kind of serve as a one-stop shop for students. Not only do we educate, we have to feed them. We have to provide clothing and shoes, psychologists and psychiatrists. It's a lot of services that we provide. So when you think about being in an environment with a pandemic, three or more people within those streams of operations get impacted with COVID, and it kind of dismantles the whole system where you begin to have these breakdowns. And because the positivity rates are higher than ever before, the other people that normally would take their spots, your choice of those people are less because they're also dealing with the pandemic. Many of our children have actually lost their mothers and fathers and grandmothers and auntie and uncles. So they are grieving. They're being traumatized on a whole nother level. And we believe that we can bring them back face-to-face and help them in their loving school environment because we believe that's the best environment for them if we could just be left alone. If we could just get the resources that's due to us and do what we do best in a school environment, loving and caring for our students and staff, we believe that we can accelerate the learning of students. On an average, they say all students are like five months behind because of the pandemic. So that means we have to accelerate their learning. When they're out of school, sick, it disrupts the learning. It sets them further behind. The Governor in the state of Florida is continuing to do the testing. Although he says that he's not using the test to measure anything other than where students are, we know that that's not true. We chose to respond to their letter by complying because we believe in evidence. The evidence in Broward County says that we have consistently about six students refusing to wear masks. Four or five of them are, and I'm treading lightly here for purple laws, four or five of them are kind of the same students. So there is no major outbreak of students, hundreds and hundreds of students, of parents that want their children to come to school without masks. You have five or six daily that we're seeing in the data and we're reporting. And when you get those letters from the Department of Education, they have all these words that are very ambiguous. You know, they can mean different things to different people. And it's all a part of this overall strategy to, you know, continue to a tight public education. Judge Holmes, you're retired. And, you know, I've been praying and thinking, and, you know, maybe this is really the time that, you know, you make your legacy even broader. I just believe with everything in me, as I've been on the school board for nine years now, that we should be able to sue the Governor for not funding education properly. As you look at the continued cuts to public education and the Florida Constitution that says that students K through 12 have a right to free public education. You can't provide free, quality-free public education if you look at the funding that's continued to be taken away. While we're dealing with this pandemic, I'm beginning to now think that this whole mask thing is a diversionary tactic to keep us from focusing on the money. So the American Rescue Plan gave the Governor about $2.3 billion that he has not given to any school board in the state of Florida. There's another $2.4 so billion dollars of those fundings that he didn't even put his application in to apply for in June when it was due. There's also $2.8 million of SNAP fundings, children that require for SNAP funding that he has not applied for. That would give That would give families an additional $375 per child per month. And, you know, if you've got three or four kids, that's a lot of money. So there's a lot of money that's been made available through President Biden's and Vice President Kamala Harris's American Rescue Plan that we have not seen in the state of Florida. And you all know, we've been fighting to expand Medicaid for, you know, two or three decades now. So we have to pay attention to the money side of this and how in a pandemic, it's, it's like, you can't even put your mind around it. In a pandemic where the positivity rates are higher than ever before. Now, remember, we opened schools last year, and we mandated masks. There was no violation of parents' rights. We had an aggressive summer school program. Our former superintendent, Mr. Robert Reunzi, implemented this comprehensive summer school program that we offered on 91 sites this summer, and we mandated masks. There was not an issue. But now, after the CDC rules and the positivity rates are higher than ever before, we continue to break records in the state of Florida with people dying. I think we're like fifth in the nation right now with the number of COVID cases that we have. And we have to fight a fight to keep people alive the best we can with masks and little babies under 12, you know, who don't have an option for a vaccine. It, it's just mind-blowing from a policymaking perspective as to where we are. And then you got this group of aggressive, insane people, violent people that want to attack, that want to threaten your life and say and do all these things, and then systematically have rules be punitive. You know, I found it quite interesting as I was reading through our documents. You know, initially, one letter called out the eight school board members' names who voted in support of masks and didn't include the one that voted against mask mandate. So, of course, you know, I always have questions for the attorneys, Judge Holmes. I wanted to know, how in a democracy do you separate a decision-making body? When you are part of a board and the board votes in a democracy, whatever the majority vote is, is the outcome of what you implement, and that's the rule you follow. So on our board, all nine board members' salaries will be withheld. DeSantis is withholding all nine of us, even the one that voted in favor of the mask mandate. When you're on a team, you're on a team. When that team loses, you lose. You can't, even if you're a bench warmer, if they win, you still get your ring for winning a championship, and it works the other way, too. So this is a public policy nightmare that we find ourselves in. We're literally fighting for the lives of the people that we love, live with, and play with every day. And I can tell you, the community has been wonderful. I'm a proud product of Broward County, the 33311. The level of support within the community, the level of support around the nation. We got accused last week, I think it was, for making mask mandates so that we could get on CNN, you know? And now, we're getting blamed for the rise in COVID numbers. The governor is saying because schools are doing all this testing is really why the numbers are going up. You have to test to know what people's situation is. So every day, it's a new thing, a new accusation, a new spin, a new turn. More people are dying. Now, the governor is aggressively focused on these antibodies. Once you get COVID with mild symptoms, you go get this intervention. And you guys know that science teaches that prevention is always the best method of mitigating the spread of any type of disease. So we're standing. I know personally, I won't ever allow somebody to bully and threaten me into a situation that goes against what I believe morally. You know, I'm, I'm a firm believer in God, and I believe that God is my ultimate authority. And I don't care if it's a law or whatever somebody say their mama say or whoever. If it goes against what I feel God would want me to do, I'm not going to go along with it. We cannot put people in situations that they could potentially lose their lives. When you have 4,000 students in a school, they're gonna, when they change classes, they're all there together. When the school ends, they're all there together. You have to use masks to mitigate the spread of the coronavirus in the schools and outside in the communities. I also want to encourage people that are not vaccinated to get vaccinated. I promise you, I'm vaccinated. When you go get the shot, there is not a shot for white people and a shot for black people. It's the same shots that they give us all. White people are getting the shots. They're not dying as rapidly as black people are. If you have leaves in your white yard that you think that you can borrow and get rid of the coronavirus, it doesn't work like that because it mutates. The strands continue to change. You need to take the vaccination. There were many black people that worked on creating these vaccines. It's not a hoax. We cannot continue to lose people. I have Tina Jones funeral on Saturday. She took her mom and dad to get vaccinated, was never vaccinated. Now she's dead at 49. I had a doctor tell us in the Broward Behavior Health Coalition Board Meeting the other day how devastated he is working in a hospital. As he's hooking somebody up to a ventilator, they're asking him if they can get the vaccine, and he has to respectfully tell them, it's too late. And then two or three days later, push them out in a body bag because they have died. So this is serious. We must continue to stand and fight. We know that the governor will appeal the ruling of Judge Cooper. We know that he has his buddies in some of the courts. So we don't know what the legal aspects and how it ultimately would turn out. We don't know if he's going to remove us. I find that interesting because being on the school board, you have some limitations. You can say a lot more and do a lot more when your hands are not tied when you're on the board. And finally, just one last thought. I find it interesting that there's two school boards that are being targeted to mo-, the most are school board members that have two female superintendents and two black school board chairs. It's interesting to me, Jasmine, that this nation still has not learned how to respect black women, has not learned that black women are not going away. We can't be bossed, we can't be bought. We are resilient. And when it comes to our babies, we will literally die for our children. So I am so appreciative of all of the support, the prayers of the community. And this fight continues, as the songs say, "In the Beat Goes On." So continue to pray for us. Let's continue to keep these conversations going because this battle is not over yet. But we know ultimately, we don't fight against flesh and blood. So please put us on your prayer list because this is a spiritual battle. And we know a God who has a way of working this out beyond our wildest dreams. And thank you again, Madam President.
Thank you, Doc. Let me ask Ms. Edmond, how many, approximately, how many folk have opted out in, in your school district?
There isn't an opt-out polit-, process. You just don't wear a mask. So there's not a form you have to submit so you can wear a mask.
Do you have any guess? I mean, is it the most of, a majority of the folk who are not wearing masks or?
It depends on what schools you go to.
Okay. What about you, Dr. Neely?
Hi, yes, we do have an opt-out policy. The parent who would like to have an opt-out, they will need to get an exemption from their medical physician and present that once it's signed off and turned in. That's one way. And the, our second option is that we encourage parents to certainly sign up for the HOPE Scholarship that's been put in by the state of Florida. And so that option means that they can go to another district that would not be mandating masks. So those are our two options right now. The HOPE Scholarship voucher, as well as the exemption form that needs to be signed off by their physician.
And have, I know that we have the same option in Broward. Dr. Osgood, do you have any idea how many students have taken advantage of the HOPE Scholarship and gone to that private school?
Yeah, I think we have somewhere around 30 or 40. But with the HOPE Scholarship, that's something that's been in place if you feel that your child is being bullied or harassed. And, you know, we had the creation of this new COVID bullying, you know, through this process. As I said earlier, we're reporting about six kids, five or six kids daily that refuse to wear a mask. And we do isolate them. We put them in a different environment. And their parent could take the HOPE Scholarship and say that we are bullying them, but they've chosen not to do that. We have, I think, the last number that I got last week, we have about 75 students that have opted out because of medical conditions, where they've gotten medical conditions. And a lot of those are our students with disabilities that would do that normally. If students have an IEP or 504 where they have a disability, that was in place before COVID, we have to provide reasonable accommodations to those students. So we already have environments in schools that we operate all the time for those students to provide their accommodation in an environment where they can still learn. There is no outpour of people that don't want their kids to come to school with masks. It's the anti-mask people that's pushing this and being violent, even to the extent that we had to arrest one of them last week because they went to a school and was videotaping a girl that had on a mask, and she asked them to stop, and one of them shoved her. Now, think about it, you're an adult, and you're going to go out to a school. You're so crazy about masks, you're going to shove somebody else's kid. So the, the group of people that you see gathering and causing these confrontations at school board meetings, it's a small group of people. I'm not sure all of them even have kids that are in school. They just on a certain political agenda that they feel they can go and disrupt things and have these voices and these opinions and think that everybody is supposed to acquiesce and bow down. But that's why we are keeping the data. There is no thousands and thousands of people that are sending their kids to school without masks or wanting to opt out and leave school districts. A lot of the private schools, all of the Catholic private schools are mandating masks. Many of the charter schools are mandating masks. Some of the schools that have not, they've had to already make an, an assessment and now mandate masks because the outbreak and the outpour of the numbers. Hillsborough was like that. They didn't mandate masks initially. After this holiday weekend, we'll see the numbers go up even more because people travel and they gather in large groups on the holidays. So it's no science or no evidence. Normally, in, in any discipline, you use evidence-based decision-making. They have no evidence. It's just them pushing a certain agenda forward that's putting people's lives at risk.
Thank you. I think, I think I saw Judge Holmes' hand. Did I see your hand earlier? Okay.
No, I, I was leaning in, and I, I guess I was saying glory.
Let me ask you. Tell, tell us a little about, I know that the, the NAACP, certainly the Florida State Conference. And let me just say that the branches, all of the units, our college chapters, our youth councils, our high school chapters, our adult branches, make up the Florida State Conference. So the Florida State Conference is not some faraway entity, is us. And so we have entered into litigation with Southern Poverty Law Center as our attorneys. And Judge Holmes, if you will, tell us a little bit about that.
Good evening, everyone. You know, I've never seen an issue become so politicized. And, and everybody has an opinion as to what's going on. And, and, you know, was commented that some of the people don't even have children in schools. Three, four years, this country has relied on inoculations and certain standards for children to even enter school, starting with pre-K and kindergarten, where they were so that we could control smallpox and measles and lumps and things of that nature. So we're not mandating that people be vaccinated, but the schools are trying to mitigate the spread. And medical experts, people who didn't drive by the medical school, but people who actually went in there and, and got an education, have said that the way to keep this virus, the Delta variant, and you've got to remember, this is a variant. The COVID of 2020 was mild compared to how it variates. And what, what happened is this virus doesn't want to go away. So it mutates and, and becomes even more contagious. And there's a new variant of this virus out there. It's called the MU, Mew. So maybe Ms. Shirley can, can comment on that. But I just heard today that the World Health Organization is keeping an eye on that variant because it's like the Delta is mutating again, trying to live. Because, you know, the doctors are trying to keep up, the scientists are trying to keep up, we're how to get rid of it, and it just mutates. And so to avoid the spread, you know, going back to 1918, you know, we, we've had these, these pandemics to, to break out. And, and so the school boards are, you know, people keep saying the law, but the Florida Constitution gives the duly-elected school board members the obligation to give a safe and secure environment to students who are attending their schools. So the NAACP joined with the Southern Poverty Law Center to, to say, look, this is well, well within the parameters of why these individuals, Dr. McNeely, Dr. Osgood, Ms. Edmonds, this is why they got elected because they swore that they were going to uphold the Constitution of the state of Florida. Judge Cooper's order just came out today, and I started reading it, and he's covering everything. But my first thought was, did Governor DeSantis have the jurisdiction to enter this executive order? And people keep saying, well, he, he, that's the law. Laws in this state come from the legislature. That's the, the House and the Senate. They meet, and they go up in March, and they pass all these House bills. A minute, executive orders normally go to agencies to say, this is how you're going to do things, okay? And, and the legislature has the right to go in and say, look, we like this, and we're going to codify this. We're going to make this the law in the state of Florida. But they didn't choose to do that, okay? So the governor did an executive order. Judge Cooper's order starts out with whether or not the governor had the jurisdiction to enter the order. He said, no, because no state of emergency has been declared in this state. That's normally when the executive waters, you know, the, the executive branch has to move quickly. And, you know, the Bible says, where there is no law, there's no transgression, okay? There was no law when the school boards start saying, wear masks, okay? The executive order came from the governor when we're not in a state of emergency. And therefore, the school district said, hey, look, we're, we're well within our rights to do this. And the governor says, well, I, I want you to follow my order and let the parents decide. Some parents don't make good decisions. The courts have recognized that. We have a theory called in loco parente, where the courts, and I, I even, when I was on the bench, I had to enter orders where hospitals wanted to administer certain medications and certain treatments to their, to children. The parents were saying no, okay? But the lawyers for the hospital came and got a court order for me to sustain the life of the child, okay? And so it's, it, this is nothing new. This is nothing that people are making up. This has been going on for, for quite some time. So this school board stood their ground, the governor has stood his ground. What I find a little disturbing is, well before Judge Cooper made his, even his oral ruling, he made an oral ruling saying that the school board was well within their parameters of issuing the mandate for masks. Two days before his ruling, the Commissioner of Education was already stopping the money flow from the schools. Like, you know, we don't care how you rule, Judge, you know? You know, and, and I will point out that judges are co-equal branch of government also, okay? They're, they're not to cower to, just because, you know, you have the executive, the legislator, and the judicial branch. Everybody has oversight, okay? It's what we call checks and balances. So before the, the, the third branch of government could make the ruling, the executive branch was already ruling. Now, look, we elect governors and Now, look, we elect governors and presidents. We don't coronate kings, okay? You, you, you gotta understand that people have to stay in their lane. So that's why these lawsuits were filed. So, um, the, the money has already been withheld. We were going to move for a stay, uh, pending Judge Cooper's ruling, but the money was already taken even before the judge made the ruling. So that's something that we're gonna caucus about to see what we can do. As Judge, as, as, as Dr. Osgood has said, um, you know, if she, you know, wants to take the money from someplace else, she's gotta get, uh, the governor's permission. And we already, basically, we can forecast what that is. But you know what? That's why we have the courts. Um, people said that segregation would never go away, but we have the courts, okay? And it was a conservative court. Uh, so I, I have great faith in the men and women on the bench. Uh, some of them are scared to make rulings. I understand that. Um, but those that will stand up and say, look, this is the law. And, and we're going to uphold the law. I believe that we'll, we'll, we'll be, uh, successful. We will be victorious. And therefore, all I can say is, um, I, I applaud the school board members trying to save these children. Um, you know, there's, there's a whole lot that goes into, uh, things that, um, you all have to do. Um, you know, feeding the children, clothing them, you know, we won't leave it up to the parents' rights. Don't send your child to school half naked and hungry, okay? But they do. And, and that's what the schools, the schools have stood in local parente for years. That's in the place of the parent for years. So I don't wanna use a lot of legal jargon, but Madam President, uh, we're gonna persevere. Um, I, I believe, you know, I, I've got an email in to, uh, the, the people involved. But we sort of had to wait until the judge's ruling came out, uh, because the oral ruling, you know, I used to rule from the bench all the time, but it wasn't, wasn't etched in stone until it was put in writing. So we now have it. We're, we're all pouring through it. And so we're gonna meet again and then we'll get guidance from the, uh, NAACP as to how you want us to proceed from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, let me hear, uh, Dr. McNeeley, I know that you have worked with your president, uh, there in Elatchwa County, Ms. Evelyn Fox. And Evelyn's on now. Tell us some of the things that you have done and how we could better serve you better.
Well, first of all, Mrs. Fox, as president of the NAACP, has been so rewarding for us because she attends the meetings, she keeps up with what's going on. She delivers to the community and her board of people, so we appreciate her. She was there just the other day when we were, um, going in to vote for the litigation piece. She supports that, um, and she supports what we have done on this board. I thank her publicly for that, but she knows it. Um, she is a superior leader. And so, um, we're needing for the NAACP, number one, continue to, um, bolster vaccinations for all people, but especially people of color. I'm hoping that we can get more people in our community to, to understand the necessity of what's going on. And I wanted to say this to you, President Ellison, that many of the eleven hundred children right now who are in quarantine in our district, many of those cases are showing up in the homes. And parents are putting their children on the buses or bringing them to school knowing that they are not well and that they are positive. So we've got a double fight, not only to try our best to mitigate with the masking and encouraging the vaccine for children twelve and older, washing of the hands, social distancing, all of those things. But we need people to understand how you impact other students, not just your child, but how you impact other students in our schools and the staff. I haven't said very much about the staff. I think Dr. Osgood mentioned that instructional people are nervous. They should be because they are really on the lines fighting as well. Not only the instructional staff, but the people who have to transport the children to school, our bus drivers and transportation. So it's, it's not just, um, what's happening in one place or two places. And all schools are different. You know, there's no one fit all. And so we have to look at our policies, emphasize, make sure that everybody understands. We just put out a brand-new COVID, um, video today. Very nice, very common, um, place for people to be able to understand without a lot of jargon about, um, medical this or that, but plain, common English. But we need to make sure, and I think the NAACP could help us with that, with, um, media releases, comments, um, probably, um, in our local, um, newspapers. Whatever they can do, we appreciate the voice, the support, and the resources of what we need. So I think that our local chapter has done really well. I know that we'll talk after this, um, panel and to say, if you weren't listening, Mrs. Fox, did you hear President Ellison ask what else could be done? And we need to put our heads together to, um, relate what else could be done. I think we're doing decent, but there's always room for improvement. And I'm sure she is, if she would speak up, she would agree that they are going to do whatever is necessary.
Thank you, Dr. McNeeley. President Fox? President Fox, are you able to unmute? Okay, we will come back to-
Okay.
President Fox, um, Ms. Edmund. Tell us, um, we, how, if, I believe you have been working with President Eugene there. Will you share with us, um, that you, what you've been working together on and what would you like to see going forward?
So some of the things that I appreciate, our president of the NAACP, um, Ms. Esther, is listening. So I'm able to call her, share with her various concerns, uh, including what's going on with COVID. And what I'm looking forward to, and just recently, she and other members of the NAACP attended uh, the school board meeting and spoke up, um, as it relates to masking in the schools. What I look forward to is presenting to the executive committee and getting, uh, more people, more engaged with our school board meetings through attendance, through sharing with them the way of work and how to access the board documents and just really making it plain so that people can see that this is something that's important. This is something that is obtainable. You have a school board member willing to teach you and show you how to access things. You have a school board member that's willing to be held accountable and answer the tough questions. So that's some of the work that I'm looking forward to, um, presenting at the next executive leadership team meeting with Ms., uh, Ms. Esther, as well as, um, getting more people to attend our school board meetings and submit comments. Because oftentimes you only hear one voice. You only see certain people at the school board meetings. So I would like to see more people, uh, uh, more people, more black and brown people show up and speak, speak about the issues that matter to them. Whether it's masking, whether it's the achievement gap, whether it's discipline. So that's what I'm looking forward to, um, partnering with Ms. Esther and the Education Committee on.
Okay. President Eugene, if you will introduce yourself and address your school board members' request.
Absolutely. Um, good evening, everyone. Um, Esther Eugene, president of the St. Petersburg Branch, NAACP. Um, paying homage, of course, to President Ellison and President Neweyzy, um, and, and the other presidents that are here. You know, when I spoke to the, um, school board here in Pinellas County, there was something that I stated and I, and I stand by that. Emotions are emotions and a lot of the, um, verbiage that was used at that school board was tied to an emotional place from the parents. Um, they, they feel that their kids are, are experiencing this. But what I charged the school board with was honoring and adhering to the mission that they have in place. And the mission is very clear. They are in place to ensure a safe environment for students. And it's clear, it's definitive, there's no way around it. And so if they are not adhering to that, then there's a challenge. And we recognize that we are in a pandemic and we have to have masks in place to ensure a safe environment for the students, but not just the students, for the instructors as well. And so when I look at numbers and when I look at data and I see that as of August thirty-first, we had three hundred and nineteen cases. September first, we had another hundred and forty-three cases. September second, we had another sixty-five cases. And that's not inclusive of the almost six hundred-plus cases that came before those days. We are currently at positive student numbers, two thousand, two hundred and twenty-three. It is absolutely impossible for anyone to stand in our county and say that they feel that we are not in a crisis within the pandemic. And so it is vitally important, from my stance and from my role and from my executive committee's role and from our branch and for everyone else that is partnering and collaborating with us, that we are going to support school board member Edmund. We are going to stand in front of Pinellas County School Boards and we are going to take a stance in collaboration with our state leadership stating that we are calling for a mask mandate. And if they opt not to call for a ma- mask ma- mandate, then we have to look at other alternatives in regards to that. And we are very clear and very definitive with that.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I also ask, uh, Hillsborough is not on, but they are certainly in the news as well. So I asked the president of the Hillsborough Branch, uh, to come on and share with us the work that they have done. I think the issue is, um, we're working, but we're, we're not, we're not, uh, a lot of people don't know that we're working and we ain't raising enough hell and loud enough. And so one of the things that I wanted to make sure that we bring it up a notch and, uh, and show, talk about the work that we have done and that we will continue to do as we move forward to support, um, not only the school board members and superintendents that, that understand that we need mandatory masking, but also work to save the lives of our children and our families. So, Madam President, if you will introduce yourself and talk about the work that, in Hillsborough County, um, that you, you and your branch is doing.
So, um, hello, everyone, and thank you for this wonderful opportunity. My name is Yvette Lewis and I am the president of the Hillsborough County Branch. So in Hillsborough County, what we had started, we actually started, um, last year, working with the superintendent and, um, talking about the, um, COVID and, uh, how they are recording the numbers um, and asked them to put up the dashboard. So they agreed to, uh, put a dashboard up there. We've also, um, are talking to, we were talking to them about the contact tracing and how they were going about doing that and ensuring that the, uh, students are safe. So one of the things that I, I take a strong emphasis on, because most of my background, many years, is in medical, um, it's not just wearing the mask. It is also, um, the hand washing and, um, ensuring that places are sanitized and that they are clean. So we talked extensively with the superintendent, uh, about those things that need to be implemented and what needs to be done here in Hillsborough County. Um, one thing I can say, he was very open to a lot of stuff that we were doing. Um, and that, I, I mean, a lot of the suggestions that we were putting forth for him, so, and, um, things that, uh, needed to be changed, he was, uh, open to it. So, um, as we move fast forward to this year, um, you know, I have reached out to many of the school, uh, board members and some have reached out to me. And we support them on what they were doing. So unfortunately, it was two, uh, school board members out of the seven that stated, um, that voted no on this. So, uh, I, one was a, what, one was not a surprise, but the other one was, so. Um, but that's how it usually go, uh, because they also support, um, Governor DeSantis on their, on his decision as well. So what we're doing here is we're definitely monitoring and ensuring that the numbers are coming out accurately and correct. We're making sure that the schools have all the necessary tools that they need, um, such as the hand sanitizer, um, the, the kids are wearing their mask. Um, we're training them. My, my concern is training them on how to take on, put on their mask and how to take their mask off. It is so important, um, that they know how to do that, um, and then providing them gloves and stuff like that. So, uh, I was just with our maintenance guy, the gentleman that's over maintenance. Um, he had a lot of supplies that he was dropping off and assuring that the schools had the supplies that they needed and what they need to keep the kids safe. And so, um, I have talked to the school board members and told them that the NAACP Hillsborough County Branch supports them on their decision and we stand with them proudly. And so this is where we're at. And, uh, unfortunately, we've had quite a few cases of COVID here in Hillsborough County, but hopefully, um, it'll drop. I know our ICU units and the, uh, Children's Ward, the Pediatric Ward is completely full in all of the hospitals here, um, in, in Tampa. So it's really sad to see a little one struggling for air and, and gasping for air. And we're hoping that they would understand that, um, the school board meetings have been very intense. Um, we haven't had no fighting, but we have had a lot of pushing, shoving, um, and yelling. So it's been really, um, taken back. And it's to see people, um, all they want is no mask because it's an inconvenient for them, so. But those are some of the things that we are working with the Hillsborough County School Board here. Um, and, and those are what we're doing with the superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. President Fox, are you able to unmute?
Yes, I am. Thank you, uh, President Ellison. Um, good evening, and this has been a very, very informative, um, group of panelists that you have today, and I'm just so proud of all of you. And I think I put that in the chat that I'm proud of you, strong black women. Um, our superintendent and the school board, we are just so proud of them for, um, the efforts and for stepping out, um, to say that our children come first. And I think our community, ninety-five percent of our community supports the mask mandate in Alachua County. It's just a few. And, um, from speaking with Dr. McNeeley, uh, last week, they said the thirty-nine students that brought, um, the slip-in from their physician, all of them came from one doctor. So that's saying a lot and we know where that doctor is and who he's with. But our school board has made us so proud in standing up for our students. Not in this instance, but, um, anything when it comes to our children, they stand up firm and they will not back down. I would like to say this, and I've said it, uh, to the school board member and our superintendent, we are just so proud of the, of the, um, step that they took. They stepped out first and said, our children comes first and we're standing with them. And our NAACP, uh, stands with our school board. And I guess I'm fortunate because Dr. McNeeley is a personal friend of mine and I could call her anytime, day or night, and she is there at our beck and call. So, uh, Alachua County's got this issue, but thank God we have a strong superintendent and we have a very, very strong chair of our board of school board. And, um, I don't think we have too much to worry about. The only thing we have to do is to continue to support them and let them know that we are behind them one hundred percent. Thank you so much, uh, Dr. Ellison. Thank you so much, uh, Dr. Ellison, uh, President Ellison. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's Dr. Inwesey and President Ellison, but.
And my president, Dr. Inwesey.
Thank you. Um, I want to make sure that we don't forget, um, our children who are in, um, juvenile detention centers. Um, I work very closely here in Broward. We have a regional detention center as, as many other counties as well. And so, um, uh, here in Broward, and I'm, I'm, uh, not saying that there aren't others. I only can talk about what I know about. There are certified teachers that go in and make sure that the children that are in custody. And we could say whatever we want to say, but those are, those children are somebody, somebody. And they still, the law says they still must receive an education. So, um, what, uh, we've been able to do, uh, under Dr. Oscar's leadership is to make sure that, um, that the children still receive the mandated education that's required. And also, um, there are some, some resources that she put forth to make sure that the facilities are suitable for the students and the, and the teachers. So Doc, if you will share with us that.
Thank you again, President Ellison. And I'll just take a personal privilege to tell you about my NAACP, uh, president here, who is intricately involved in the school system and has been, is the founder of the world famous Promise Program that led Broward County to turn around and stop being so egregious in arresting more kids at school than any other county. It was President Ellison's leadership that implemented that program that has significantly reduced the number of kids being arrested in school. Right now, kids are only arrested because of seventy-twenty-six or other laws, like if they bring a gun or something like that, that we don't have any discretion with. Uh, she has also been involved in redistricting and, you know, I think it was maybe a year ago or right at the beginning of the pandemic, I began to think about mask mandate. She sits on our Discipline Matrix Committee and they began to do the work to put a policy in place then as we navigate through the pandemic. So she is intricately involved. She chairs our Juvenile Justice Advisory Board. Her heart is for our students and I appreciate it because NAACP is a nationally renowned organization. And to have the commitment of Fort Lauderdale Broward Branch of the NAACP president, who I believe prioritizes education in our kids over anything else that she does at NAACP. She's always at school board committee meetings, five or six of them a month, different ways she served. Anytime I call her, as you guys recall, some officers beat up a black kid in Taravella a couple of years ago, wasn't even in my district, but it was a black kid. And we marched and we had press conferences and we raised our voice until those officers were charged because of her leadership and her connections and her commitment to our kids. When this incident jumped out and I called her, she was not just talking to me through a Zoom, a sending email. She was willing to immediately go with me in the press in front of the NAACP building, on the news, standing together, showing the support of NAACP. And I appreciate that. She takes a lot of hits because of me and the work that we do together. And I just appreciate her not wavering on that and not choosing to either stop the way. In our school system right now, in our detention center, I believe they're playing some games. They're under quarantine because of the COVID virus and there's, when they're under quarantine, teachers can't go in. We have to respect their safety and their rights. So we are providing education through the Teams platform, through the computer with the students and looking to get back in. I am arranging with our, um, public defender, Mr. Gordon Weeks, to go see if we can go into the detention center because they don't treat our kids right. Yeah, I was there maybe about three months ago because we had got, had some concerns about students wearing masks. And I try not to let them know that I'm coming so that they could give you the dog and pony show. Sometimes I just like to pop up. Those are still our babies. We have an obligation to have them learn, even if they're incarcerated, they're going to get out at some point and we don't want them to be behind. In this moment in space, we have to protect all of our children and do what we have to do to meet their needs. And certainly it adds a lot of extra hours to our plate. And I want to digress and just say this for the record. This meeting has multiple school board members, but there is no school board member on this platform that's on the same body. We have to operate in such a way that we don't violate the sunshine law. We had a meeting last week and a day later, we got a public records request asking for communication among school board members and those types of things. So they're trying to come at us in all type of ways. It is my intent, Madam President, to get one school board member from each school board together again next week so that we can continue to talk to each other, support each other and learn from each other. But we have to always be careful. We have people always watching us and how we're operating. So I am grateful for the NAACP. I feel that the NAACP can help us by continuing to lift their voice. Um, when, in, as long as I'm the chair in Broward County, I give a courtesy to elected officials for public speaking. And the president of the NAACP is elected by the citizens in that area and is an elected official. So I make sure that our NAACP president gets in and gets to speak first or second, you know, on the agenda because that presence and that speaking is key. I've been hesitant to bring the community because I know if I bring the community with the maskers, it's going to be some confrontation and people that look like us are going to bear the burden of that confrontation. But to have the NAACP continue to send letters, continue to tweet, to post, to have our state president, you know, present and engaged, to be able to meet. If you have not had your lawyers meet with Judge Holmes and the other NAACP attorneys, it is very good to do that. They have different angles that they can file other lawsuits, you know, in other ways in addition to what we're doing. And the more that we do that, the better. I just received the notification that DeSantis has already filed an appeal or a stay. So the antics are continuing, you know, even as we talk. But we need the NAACP to help us push the message about vaccines. We also need them to continue to speak out about mask mandate. And we need their legal resources to also make sure that as many lawsuits of, can be filed, that they are filed. Those attorneys have a different way. Y'all heard Judge Holmes, they have a different way of, that's what they do. So when you get them together, they come up with strategies and solutions that we're not even thinking about on our level. And I tell you, when people see the NAACP weighing in on something, they know that it's serious business. They know that they gotta really bring it in order to be able to deal with the NAACP. So I, um, you know, just ecstatic with the support that I continue to get, whether it's masks, a kid getting beat up, whether it's redistricting, I just send one text and the president is there. And because she's so critically engaged with a lot of the rulemaking within the school district, it positions her to be well-informed and be able to call people out when they lie. I don't know about in Yaw County, but in Broward, we have some people that are lying and take credit for stuff and try to twist policies and stuff like that. But with her being intricately involved in the school district on the policymaking, we have appointments. So we have to use those representatives of our community and appoint them to these different committees so that they're inside and they're able to sit at the table and represent our voice and our spirit and our community's voice at the table when those policies and those things are being created. So that when we get in a battle like this, they're already informed, they're already engaged. People always, you know, know them when they show up. You know, Marsha can come to a school board, I mean, they start texting, you know, what, what is she mad about? What's going on? You know, what, what's the black community want, you know? And that's the kind of presence that we want to have. We build power in numbers and community. So I am just grateful to all the time that you give to, um, education, Marsha. You know, I'm, I'm transitioning, I'm trying to go to a senate seat, you know, and I thought that Marsha would be a good candidate for school board, but she can be more radical at the NAACP and Judge Holmes told me she not running for nothing else. So I'm trying to find that next, you know, person to step up that we can, you know, fight, strengthen the bench again and fight even a more. But thank you again to the NAACP. Thank you to our state president. She's been up early in the morning on Zooms and engaged. And I don't take that lightly. You know, sometimes when you fight these battles, you can just be out there alone, but that certainly has not been the case here in Broward County.
Thank you. I'm going to ask those two attendees who have questions to please put your questions in the, the Q and A because we had some trolls on here early that I'm removed earlier. So if I'm not going to unmute, uh, until, uh, because I don't know who, who's who. So if you just put your questions in the Q and A, then we will get to that. Uh, and while we do that, Madam President, you have on here that I've seen, just from a quick glance, you have, um, presidents of Collier County, uh, South Bribard, Lake Wales, uh, of course, St. Pete, Hillsborough, Tri- I see Tri County, I see Jacksonville, um, on here as well, just off the top of my head. So if you will give us your marching orders, we'd be greatly appreciative.
Madam President, first of all, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I want to just thank you so much for your leadership in not only leading in Broward, but leading in the state, and you always do. So we know that and everybody needs to know that we know it. Uh, I am delighted to be here. I'm very proud of all of the other presidents that have come, uh, either through, uh, either here presently, I imagine some maybe in present or either of the, uh, virtually. But nonetheless, um, I, I'm really proud of them and many others are working as well throughout our state, as you are aware of. Um, I want to thank my Sora. I mean, she just, I don't know what to tell y'all, but I'm going to vote for her for president. Now, I don't know where she going, but she needs to be the president of the United States. And until she gets there, um, I will be coming to her meeting, stalking her with my eyes, go, go, go. And Judge Holmes is going to be there with me so I know I can get her going. Uh, and to the other board members from other, uh, cities and communities, we're so happy to have you in Florida, um, talking with us. Uh, well, I know you physically may not necessarily be here, but I mean, virtually, glad to have you because it is important when the NAACP fights, we've got to have us with us. Some people think the NAACP should go out there and fight. That is not the way it works. The NAACP goes out there and we fight. So the NAACP needs as many members, I want you to hear me, that we can get. The biggest gift you can give to the NAACP is to ensure that others join. We cannot do this fight alone. The bigger our crowds get, like Reverend Al Sharpton and those have marching, I'd like us to get a march again. We had one in two thousand with Kendrick Meek and Tony Hill. We need to have another one right now, but the numbers have to be there. And so I'm just begging anything, anything that can be done to increase our numbers so that the people in that Tallahassee, Florida, I wish I didn't have to call the name, Tallahassee, Florida, where we have our capital, we need him out of there. Yes, I did say it. Go put it in the paper, put it anywhere. I said it and I did not break any laws when I said it. Uh, uh, well, I guess I didn't. Judge, please help me. But all of us can't live in Florida, you know? And we only need two people moved, two or three people moved away from here. And I think we ought to work on that through the vote. We talk about the vote, but we don't do the vote. The numbers tell us we are not doing it. Now, I'm talking to the wrong community because let me tell you, Broward County don't play nothing. And if I were to run for something, I sure would be glad to come here. A few other places I'd be glad to go. I see presidents, some other areas that work just as hard and their numbers are very good. But our numbers are still not high enough. So we're going to keep working on that as we work to make sure we take care of our children. The best thing that we can do for our children is to get them exposed to people who want them there and who are going to do the best that they can for them. So we've just got to do a better job on making sure we let the right people. And let me just thank you all again and tell you that Broward is a part of my home too. Like, nobody told you this, but I can tell you, I have lived in Broward County and I will always live in Broward County in my head, in my heart and, and with my resources. Madam President, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, were we able to get those two, those questions in the chat? Someone asked, what are the requirements for joining? I assume they're talking about joining the NAACP. Um, that would be simply going on to, well, you can contact your local branch or, and they would certainly be glad to help you. You should join where you are, or if you went to NAACP.org, um, um, under the membership tab, it'll say, you'll ask you to put in your information and it'll direct you to your local branch. Uh, annual membership starts out at a measly thirty dollars a year and, uh, subscribing life membership is seventy-five a year, um, minimum for a total of seven hundred and fifty dollars. And so, uh, that is how you join. And we want you to not only, where if you're in Broward, then you need to call nine five four, seven six four, seven six oh four, or email me at president@NAACPFTLbroward.com and we will certainly take care of you. Now, if you, uh, AKA, then you in trouble because Dr. Oscar has already got that going on, um, there. I will, I will, I will have, I, I don't want to, uh, to, to brag, um, um, Judge Holmes and Jasmine and Sonia Brawls, but, uh, but to Madam President, Inwesey and to Minister Bridget Edwards, the Delta, the Deltas were not as strong as one would have hoped, but the AKAs have delivered, um, fifty-six so far and counting, uh, memberships, um, to the NAACP. That was just this past weekend. And so certainly, membership is power. We have a national agreement with all members of the Divine Nine. And so we want to make sure, um, that we harness that power and continue on. So yes, NAACP dot R. Thank you, uh, Mr. Sean Kenzie, the president of the, uh, Lake Wales Branch of the NAACP. Our, uh, the president did, uh, a op-ed that has been sent out. If you are not getting emails from our NAACP Florida State Conference Office, that, uh, email, um, Sean Kenzie with you, who's also the secretary of the Florida State Conference. If you will put your email in the chat, we will add you to our database um, so that you will be able to reach us and reach the president as well. Uh, and you will get our mailing so you'll understand what activities at the state is, is, uh, going on as well. And oftentimes we'll share information what's going on into, uh, into other communities. Um, uh, the op-ed is out. There was also an announcement of litigation that, um, uh, of the litigation that was filed, um, that has already been sent out. And I will ask Mr. Kenzie if he will resend it for those who may not have been on the email list. And so what we now have to do now is we understand those of us who are doing something, whatever we're doing, and that's great. We've got to do more. We've got to do, do it louder. We've, we're, uh, all of us, the community, we're just, we're, we're, we're too quiet. And so we just need to, uh, to get into good trouble. And we need to do it now and, and all of us need to be, um, at the table and being about the business of, of, of fighting for it to save the lives of our children and our communities because you know these children have to go home. And we have a lot of, we have actually one of our, um, that I know of, an executive committee member who, um, who is fighting for his life as we speak. Um, he, uh, you know, was out in the community. He, you know, works with the children and families and has, uh, been diagnosed, um, with, uh, vaccinated, um, but he has some comorbidities. And so with that, we just, uh, it just shows it could happen and. And so with that, we just uh, it just shows it could happen and does happen to us all the time. The numbers are staggering. The uh, you know, the the funeral homes um all over the state of Florida have refrigerated trucks because there's not, there's more bodies than there are um spaces in the morgue. Um and so we want to make sure that we, all of our units continue to advocate for getting the vaccine, those who are eligible, and make sure that we provide opportunities in order to do so. What I'd like to do is to add now a one-minute closeout for our our guests, our panelists. If you will just share with us and we will then, following that, we will close out with prayer. But how about Dr. McNeely? Can I unmute Doc? Okay, while we wait for Dr. McNeely and Ms. Edmund.
I would just like to say thank you, President Ellison, for coordinating and inviting me to participate. Thank you, Dr. Osgood, for getting um elected officials or board members together last week because I think it is important that we come together and talk about what's going on in our counties. And I've learned a lot just from listening to the conversation today and it's greatly appreciated. I think moving forward, I'm looking forward to building upon the relationships that we are establishing um with this cohort because again, I think knowledge is power and being together, since we are black elected, it's going to be helpful as we move forward and advocate for best practices and policies that are going to impact our children and staff in our our local districts. So again, thank you um to all of the panelists. Thank you, President Eugene, for always being a phone call away. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Dr. McNeely.
President Ellison, thank you so much again for this opportunity to speak tonight. And I hope that you had many listeners. But one of the things that we must be in solidarity together, and that is to fight and continue to fight. I am not stepping back and I know that you all will not step back, not this grand organization of the NAACP. We have looked to you for years and we will continue to look toward you for leadership and giving us the guidance that we need. You stand with us. I'm proud to be a member of the National NAACP and our local body. And I thank you so much for your fight, not only fighting for this particular issue that we were talking about tonight, but all issues. Um justice must prevail. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Dr. McNeely and Dr. Osgood.
Yeah, thank you again to my NAACP president and all that are on the executive committee, all that you do. Many off are off-camera, Sonia Burrows and Bridget and Jasmine, all of you, thank you so much. Um we have to keep this conversation going. Um when we meet as school board members on next week, I would like for us to think about um taking a couple of weeks to plan where we start maybe like the third week of September and we see every week, we have a conversation going about mask mandates on Zoom, somewhere virtually, until we get through this. We can't get weary, you know, in the beginning, we have a big cry. And then when we get into the heated part of the battle in court, it kind of dies down. So we have to continue to organize. Um in Broward, we have the NAACP leading the charge with the school board. We have Faith in Florida, which many of you met in our last Zoom. Uh there are parent association groups, there are sororities and fraternities. We need to start sending communications to those groups, asking them to consider hosting some type of forum where you have a medical person there giving us the science, school board members there talking about policies and what we're dealing with. But we have to keep building our base to this conversation that ultimately, if we have to get on the bus and go somewhere, you know, we can practice social distance. I just envisioned it as I heard our state president talking about marching. You know, Appalachia and Monroe Street, you can practice social distance and get thousands and thousands of people all the way from FAMU, all the way across FSU and down by Tallahassee Mall and bike round by the stadium. So maybe we do need to think about some type of physical outpour with our mask and practicing social distancing that we continue to keep this conversation going because we can't do it alone as school board members. We need the emails, all the parents that are sending the encouraging emails wanting the mask, send those to school board members, but also send them to the Commissioner of Education and to the governor. The governor is elected. Even if you like me and you didn't vote for him, he still has a responsibility to you as a citizen because he's the elected governor now. So we have to lift our voice up there as well. And again, to all of you, thank you, Judge Holmes, for the hours you're putting in with the attorneys. I know you spoke to our attorney at the school board. I just appreciate the unity and the the comfort of just knowing that in this moment in time, I can stand, but I'm not standing alone. I have Aaron holding up my arms when they get heavy and overburdened because you guys are there. So thank you.
Thank you, Judge. And now we will close out with certainly, as we began, with prayer. Our our Religious Affairs Chair, Ms. Minister Bridget Edwards. Ms. Edwards.
Let us go to the Lord in prayer. Eternal God and Father, we thank you, Lord, for what our ears have heard and our eyes have seen. As we prepare now, God, to depart from this call, but never from your presence, we pray, Father, that you would continue to unify us, that you would continue to strengthen and to guide us. And Lord, that you would help us, oh God, grant us wisdom as we take a stand to save our children. Father, I pray that you would continue to be the wind beneath our wings. Help the NAACP, the school board members and all of the community to stand, oh God, in these times. We pray, Father, for your protection of our children, of the instructional staff, the school board members. Oh God, we pray that you would continue to be with us. Lead and guide us, we pray. In Christ Jesus' name, we ask all these blessings. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, everybody. We appreciate you. We'll be in touch. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.